Is this on? Is that working? Is that working? Yeah.
It's working.
Yeah, it's working. I get two. One doesn't work. Okay. That's Lisa.
I'm not the...I'm the quietest, so they've never picked me out.
Oh. So, I don't know if it's best, before we start the meeting, if I could just wish you all a happy and safe and healthy New Year, that you embrace your families and just have a really great year. And I look forward to Grass Valley having a really good year, too. So, okay, with that, let's kick off 2018. The regular meeting of the Grass Valley City Council and Capital Improvement Authority and Redevelopment Successor Agency. The City Council welcomes you to its meetings, which are scheduled at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. The meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 17, and this meeting is being recorded by NCTV and is scheduled for rebroadcast on NCTV Channel 17. Please consult NCTV listings. It's also on...it's at www.NevadaCountyTV.org. And please turn off all your cell phones or similar devices. Agenda materials are available at City Hall, the Grass Valley Public Library, and city website by clicking on each item on our website on the PDF icon. Staff reports and background information related to regular agenda items are available at City Grass Valley City Hall, 125 East Main Street. Materials related to an item on the agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection in the City Clerk's Office, 125 East Main Street, Grass Valley, California during normal business hours. Such documents are also available on the City Grass Valley website at www.CityGrassValley.com, subject to the city staff's ability to post the documents before meeting. So, the meeting is called to order, and Daniel, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
I am the United States of America. One nation. This is for all.
Roll call, Kristy.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Here.
Councilmember Arbuckle.
Here.
Councilmember Foyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Swarthout.
Mayor Levine.
Here.
Great. Agenda approval, the City Council reserves the right to hear items in a different order in order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Are there any changes in the agenda order?
No changes from staff.
Okay. It's the same. There is nothing to report out of closed doors as far as any action, so there's nothing there, Mr. Thomas. Happy New Year. Introduction and presentations, I don't believe we have any tonight, so we will forego that. Public comment. There is a time limitation of three minutes per person for any items that are not on the agenda within the jurisdiction or interest of the city. Please come to the podium at this time. If you wish to speak regarding a scheduled agenda item, please come to the podium when the item number and subject matter are announced. When recognized, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to submit written information at the meeting needs to furnish 10 copies to the city clerk in advance to allow for distribution to the city council staff and the media. Okay, is there any public comment?
There is. Daniel Swartinduber, 403 Neal Street. Last time I was here was a few weeks ago, before the holidays, where we were...I was announcing to you guys that we were filing a notice of intent to circulate a petition for a sales tax measure. As part of that, we had to get some signatures. We had to actually get a little over 180 signatures in order to get that on the ballot and qualify. The week after Christmas, we submitted those signatures, a little over 260 signatures were submitted. The county elections office has already validated the signatures for us, and we've got 223 validated signatures. So, we've passed that hurdle with the county. Just want to thank some of the council members for their support and help in getting signatures, and we've formed a committee to follow this through to the elections, and so we look forward to seeing it on your agenda at some point here in the near future. We're going to add it to the consolidated ballot for Nevada County. So, just wanted to let you guys know that, and thank you again for the help in about getting this new sales tax measure on board. There's been a few things in the paper and some comments here and there, but there's a group of us that are putting together a lot of messaging and stuff for that, so I just look forward to helping further explain how that's going to help, because I know that...I'm very positive that this is going to be a huge thing.
Tim, we will be putting that on our agendas.
That'll be scheduled for the January 23rd agenda.
Other public comment? Welcome.
Hi, Patty Galley, 122 Race Street. So, Howard, I'm taking you up on your suggestion of when I want something to be public, to use the council as an opportunity.
Good job.
Thank you. So, there's been some discussion on social media about the warming shelters for the homeless, and in that discussion, I realized that the public was not aware of how much Grass Valley has done towards that issue by funding $37,000, which is not a small amount, to Hospitality House to open up 15 beds. The county just approved $44,000 today to Hospitality House, so that was good, so that's going to go to that. And I did make a post on Peeps, and I do have a large audience that reads the posts. I had to turn the comments off, because there are some people who don't want warming shelters, but the overwhelming majority of the public does. And I would like...I don't know how other vehicles, other than maybe writing a letter to the editor, that I can help the community understand that we have stepped up. You guys did step up and open these beds up after the Salvation Army decided not to do it, and that when we're talking...when the majority of discussion about warming shelters is going on on social media, they are differentiating between Nevada City and Grass Valley. So, when Nevada City doesn't have a warming shelter, we all get lumped in together. So, I'm looking for any suggestions to help spread that word, maybe the union will do another article on it. And people's specific questions are, what are we getting for our $37,000? And, you know, people think that they can just sleep there when I know that they can get food and, you know, clothes and showers and other things. So, I do think it's important with any negativity about what people aren't doing for the homeless, what we are doing for the homeless to get out there. So, anything you can let me know, email me or whatever. Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Our public information office.
Oh, is it?
My pleasure, thank you. Okay, cool.
Hi, I'm Greg Zoller, 551 Whiting Street. I recently made an offer in Peeps. I am the president of Creative Learning Adventures that owns the pick-and-pan market there. To turn it back into a neighborhood market. Concept behind it is to offer the community the things that a neighborhood market would offer that would be positive. And in the offer that I made in the Peeps, I'd like to just reiterate here and introduce it and to make a case for it. I know that there's...or I actually, I don't know the exact wording of it, but I read about that in Grass Valley, there's strict ordinances about sleeping outside in RVs. And I...in the work that I'm doing now, which has been for some time working with the homeless, maybe a lot behind the scenes, I actually support that, except that I feel that it's essential when you have a law like that, you also make a pathway for people to get out of homelessness. And I don't personally believe that warming shelters, as they're understood today, are a good way to do that, and that they're a great opportunity to do that, because it's a time when people are coming in and they're under stress and they're questioning whether this is what they want, and it's a chance to coach them and give them an opportunity to begin exploring other ways to live. It's very difficult when you're homeless to have a way out of it, because of how stressful it is and difficult. So, I offered the...to, at no cost, to any...to the government to, you know, to take some people in, put them to work during those days, and see on a trial basis how that would work, definitely addressing all of the problems that...or concerns that people would have with that. So, I'm just here right now to make that offer, just in the spirit of let's get ahead of this.
I hope you understand that public...that public comment is not an inter...exchange with the city council. We hear the public comment, and we will take that under advisement and...
And perhaps in taking it under advisement, we could have a separate meeting sometime when we could have a discussion about it.
Other public comment, please?
Matthew Coulter, Henderson Street, Grass Valley. McCaffrey gave a good presentation today on what the county's doing for the homeless situation. Same thing, I asked the county over there with the building of the Taj Mahal, which will never get built, is a place to get clean water, a place to use a bathroom, and a roof, because when these people are on the fringes and they don't...because they don't get it... they can't get into Hospitality House, there's no way. They have no other place to go, so they're pushed out on the fringes, that then they maybe do armed robbery, or maybe they do other things, because there's really no other place for them to go but down. So, without something before, that involvement and housing and all these grand plans that I've been hearing about for years and years and years, that there's some kind of interim thing, even if it's a yellow taped off area where you can at least lay down and not be harassed for a little while. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment, please?
Everybody, my name's James Inman, 7 Stewart Street. I am now the acting president of Gold Country United Soccer Competitive League. Here to ask for some help and some advice, hopefully procuring a field, land, you know, making a facility with multiple fields, a nice building, possibly a snack shack or something like that. But we need a bigger and better sports complex up here. Fields that we have are diminishing greatly. The fields are getting used, the schools have less money. We've got to pay more money just to use the fields. Got to pay more money for the upkeep. At those fringes where, you know, you'd possibly like to procure a location, that would be something that the council could help us with, possibly tax issues, you know, some sort to help the league. So, our league between Gold Country United and Gold Country Youth Soccer. Soccer, so you can imagine. All competing, we're all trying. You've got all those other outdoor sports that want to play on those fields, too. So, you can imagine it's getting tight. I'm sure, as you know, that the Montino Field's been in repair, it's been almost a year. We still can't use it. Might not be able to use it for spring yet. Sure, hopefully we can use it for fall, but, you know. Field, if you go and look at Grass Valley Charter, the old Hennessy School, that field is destroyed. There's nothing left. Look out there right now. It's lost, you know, tens of thousands. Something that the council can help us with, that would be great. Glad to give you my email. At att dot com. Any advice or any suggestions would be grateful. I appreciate it. Guys, have a good evening.
Is there any other public comment?
And I live in Penn Valley right now. We had a skate event at the Condon Skate Park. And Tim, wonderful sponsor and helper, giving us permission, getting sponsors like HPE Rentals and SPD Markets. Get going, some fun at the skate park for the kids at night, something to do. Front page of the paper, I'm a roller skater. Drugs. IHOP and the gas stations are all that's open. If something doesn't happen in this realm of it, as the other sports are called as well, so it's in there, so the kids would... Doesn't have to be something that's done overnight, but it has to be something that's done. Kids there don't have choice. A lot of them are poor. They don't have means to go drive to Roseville or somewhere else to go do this. A lot of people skate. I'm from Santa Cruz, and that's a way of transportation, a way of friendships, they call it a family, a skate family. So, I'm asking and saying, thank you, Tim, because if it wasn't for you, this wouldn't have happened. You know how long it's been? I was in this office for three years, begging and crying, begging and crying. Please, let this happen. And he did, and he took a chance. Really glad you did, because each one of these kids and more are begging, when's the next one? When are you going to do it? And we can't afford the $175 each time we throw an event. That's how much insurance is for the city, and that's if we had permanent lighting, solar, and city could be in charge of when they go out and things like that. I think the skate community would be a lot better off, because they'd have a place to go, you know? And the kids...and I have a 14-year-old son at NU, and he skates all the time, as much as I do, we both do. It's a family thing, and it's needed here, and the cost is not...nothing more than $2,000 to put the lights in solar. I'd like to give you each one, may I? I didn't have ten. Oops, I knocked over your... Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment, please? Not seeing anybody, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. The next item is item F, consent items. All matters listed during the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless before the city council votes on the motion to adopt members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. So, any changes or withdrawals from the council? Staff? Public? Mr. Matt? Six, seven. Okay. Thank you all for coming and speaking. Okay, so...
One.
One, eight, nine, and 10.
See, roll call, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle? Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout? Mayor Levine?
Yes, thank you.
Notion carries five zero.
Item we will be looking at is under G, item two, which is continuance of local emergency proclamation. And this...do you want to speak to it?
This is for the sinkhole, and we're continuing this proclamation until such time we receive full funding from FHWA, just to make sure that we secure that funding.
Sir.
Just had one question on this. I brought it to Tim's attention that the historic bridge at the Glen Jones Park is undermined pretty severely, and I was wondering if any of this declaration is for other things or just the sinkhole? Like, if other things got damaged during the storm, can we apply stuff to that? Like that bridge, and then there's another spot on Idaho, Maryland, right at Sutton, that's literally carved into the road, and it has...nothing's been dealt with at all there.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other questions regarding continuance of local emergency proclamations? I'll close the comment time.
So, this proclamation has to be associated with the damages that January 11th or that storm. Us, it would only be the sinkhole. The other items that he...Matthew has brought up to the front counterstaff, engineering is looking into.
And that we approve item number two.
Second.
Kristy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout? Mayor Levine?
Thank you.
Notion carries five zero.
Item three, approve the purchase of a Dodge chassis in the amount of $51,651.37 for a new fire department squad. This is the council to...this is council to approve the fire chief to enter into an agreement for National Auto Fleet Group for purchase of one Dodge 450 chassis for a new squad. Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so, item three, is there any public?
Matthew Coulter, my question's on that is chassis, and then what is it to get it operational? How much more? Or is that a complete truck?
Chief, okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding this? Chief, do you have any?
And is it a measure N expense?
Chief?
For tonight is the purchase of the chassis. It's kind of a two-part project. Part one is chassis acquisition, part two is the buildup of the body acquisition. Chassis is the cost listed here. The buildup is roughly another $50,000. This is together down Los Angeles, we go pick it up.
Is there a motion?
Measure N.
Is it measure N?
Oh, yes, it was previously approved measure N. It's expensive.
Question?
So moved.
Chris? Voice photo, okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Gold Country Village, rating permit 13-04, accept public improvements, will offer dedication. This is a project that's been done, and Engineering Department, Public Works is asking us to accept this. Mr. Coulter, do you have a question?
During public comment, you can't respond. Can you respond now during this format?
Ask a question? You have a question?
A question. Why was no crosswalk put in there? Why have the trees not been trimmed back below the line? Because when they striped it, they moved the whole road over, and now all the school buses have to hit the trees, and you can see where they're obviously all scraped off. As well as, my question is, has anyone from the council been out there? And tell me if that's a good striping job. It's like the worst striping job in town. It's like this everywhere.
Do you have any comments on that, or is a motion?
Second.
Saying five, I say nine.
Aye.
Item number five, City Grass Valley Water Service earthquake preparation and control project approval resolution of state water resources control board financial assistance. The council adopt a resolution 2018-05, designating representative authority to sign a SRF, application agreements and related documents. Resources. Any questions regarding this item? Okay, is...take a motion?
I'm so moved. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Item six, City of Grass Valley Water Treatment Plan Improvement Project Approval Resolution for State Water Resources Control Board Financial Assistance. The council adopt resolution 2018-4, designating your representative authority to sign the SRF application agreement and related documents, similar to the last item on the agenda. Questions?
Matthew Coulter, this was on my list to ask before I got here, but walking here, even walking by some storm drains, the smell of raw sewage was so strong. My question is, how bad is our sewer system leaking? We're going to reline it, but until it's relined and certified, how bad is it actually leaking right now? Like, and in sewage talk, is it a percentage that's acceptable, or is that...how do they do that?
This item is for the water treatment plant, so there isn't anything here on the wastewater treatment plant?
Sorry.
I move that we approve item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and finally, professional service agreement for financial consultant services. Is recommended that the city council approve the changes to the attached agreement between City Grass Valley and Andy Heath for financial consultant, finance director services, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. This is regarding our employment of our finance director, who is a contract worker. Are there any questions regarding this?
Second.
On favor? This is a money item, so could I...Kristy, would you please call on this one?
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, there are no public hearings tonight. The next item is appointment of interview committee for historical commission vacancies. Staff is requesting that I appoint an interview committee for historic...to fill out the historic commission. Does anybody want to volunteer? And I would volunteer if along with somebody else if... Oh. So, Jan and I, if that's okay? Okay? Okay, and then item 12 is pay for park... Okay, and then item twelve is pay for parking. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we, we do? I can't just appoint? It says to appoint. Okay.
There's a point.
That okay? You want to make? Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm going to get you for that one.
No, I'm just trying to keep you.
Okay. Item number twelve is pay for parking pilot program. And the question is if the council will approve staff to proceed with a pay for parking pilot program in the municipal parking lot at the corner of Neal and South Auburn Street to include one moving of the current permit parking at that location to the city-owned lot at one-sixty-one South Auburn Street, and two authorized police department expenditures to facilitate the pilot program. And.
Well, Lisa's leaving.
Lisa's recusing herself, yeah. And she feels that there might be some conflicts with her downtown, I assume downtown, I'm not speaking for.
I think downtown association.
So, with that.
Same to you.
Hey, do you want to, God, we're not using our TV.
Oh.
It's okay.
New TVs.
It's okay.
So, what do you got?
We just want a picture of you on our TV.
On the TV, talking.
[laughing].
Yes, thank you, Mayor Levine, council members, for the record, Captain Steve Johnson with your police department. And what we have tonight is I'm bringing forward a proposal asking for, it's an administrative item, asking for your approval to proceed with a pay for parking pilot program. And I emphasize pilot, this is a big change for our community. We're one of the remaining cities that has, does not charge for parking in our downtown, historic downtown area. Most cities do these days, and, but it is a big change for us. And so, in so doing, we felt that a pilot program would be a good way to start. And that being the case, we're targeting a specific parking lot in the city on the corner of Neal Street and South Auburn Street. It's a gateway property to the downtown area, readily accessible and highly visible to people exiting the freeway and coming to the downtown area. It's very conducive to a pay for parking pilot type program because of its size, the location, and the, it's readily accessible, but there's limited ingress and egress, and so it's just kind of a prime location. It also can be serviced by a one pay station, and so the costs are minimal for that. But the motive behind it, you know, primarily, in the past years, you know, we've talked about pay for parking program and the feasibility and possibilities for Grass Valley, with the goal being, how do we manage the limited parking space in the downtown area and encourage parking turnover and have those prime parking spots available for customers, patrons, and visitors to downtown? And currently, as you know, we have time restrictions on Mill Street and in various lots. Enforcement of those time restrictions can be difficult and labor-intensive, just because it requires, as we do it now, someone to mark tires of vehicles that are parked in those locations, and then return, you know, after a certain amount of time to see if those vehicles have moved. In the meantime, other vehicles have arrived, and they need to be marked, and it's, it's just a labor-intensive process that has had limited effectiveness over the years. So, in looking how technology has evolved and the different options out there, we feel that it's a good time to, again, give this a try in a pilot program, test out the technology, receive feedback from the community, from stakeholders, business owners, and, and then see, is this feasible? Is this something we want to expand? And we can make that decision at the conclusion of the pilot program. There, there are several questions that are, would be part, the goal of this pilot program in trying to come to, you know, find a good model that works for the City of Grass Valley. When you think of the cost per hour for parking, the hours during which you would be required to pay for parking, those kind of things are some of the, the questions we look to answer during the pilot program. And fortunately, with the technology we're looking at, with the pay stations, is all that data is captured and available, and so it helps us to make those decisions. And without that kind of data, it's hard to really even talk about feasibility of this kind of program. So, peak hours, usage, that kind of thing is, is all tracked and very readily available for us. So, we have chosen a vendor to go with for the pilot program. The company's name is Parkion, and, and we, we looked at several different vendors, and, but based on pricing, responsiveness to us as the customer, and just their reputable market share and, and other sister cities that they've serviced, or cities in the area, they, they seem like a good fit. They also offered to provide us with a pay station free of charge for the pilot program. So, that was nice. The only cost to the city will be a fifty dollar a month access fee for their software and management system. So, with that, I, I assume there will be some questions, but I'll leave it at that and the written report that you have, and we're looking for, again, approval from council to proceed with this pilot program, which would include moving this, the lot is currently designated for permit parking only, and we would have to relocate that permit option to a different lot. And the parking lot, it's a gravel lot now at one-sixty-one South Auburn, literally right across the street from the current lot, is where we would move that permit parking. That opens up this entire parking lot for customers and visitors to the downtown. So, it's thirty-one spaces that are currently not available during the daytime hours for customers and people frequenting the downtown. So, not only is it a pilot program, but it's, it's increasing the amount of available parking, which is also a benefit. So, with that, we're asking to do the pilot program, which includes moving that permit parking. We also need authorization as the police department for our expenditures to facilitate this pilot program. And then finance asked also that council authorize the mayor to execute necessary banking resolutions, enabling credit and debit cards to be used as part of the pilot program. One thing I didn't speak to is the pay station that we're looking at, the Parkion product, is a kiosk that would be placed in this parking lot, and so when you park in the lot, the spaces will be numbered, and for this parking lot, the best model is a pay-for-space model, where you would park, space is numbered, you would re, go to the kiosk and then make payment to park in that space, and you would enter that number, and, and so you've paid for that space for a certain duration of time. We felt it was important, because of the demographic of our community, that we have a wide range of payment options, and so for the pilot program, and probably going forward, what we'd like to see is, is that capability. So, for the pilot program, the, the kiosk is going to have the ability to accept cash or coin, credit or debit cards, and you can pay with your cellphone through an app as well. But the technology, you've probably used it in other cities, but it just, there's a lot of benefits to it. If you're at dinner, and you, you use the app, you can be notified that you have fifteen minutes left, you want to add time, and so without leaving the restaurant to run down and feed a meter, you can actually increase your time right there on your phone. So, there's just a lot of capabilities like that. To be honest, I'm not even aware of all of them. I was talking to the Parkion rep, and there's a lot of capabilities that we can have, spend time during this pilot period, you know, kind of vetting those out and testing out the technology. That, available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
And where are they, a nearby city that's using that?
So, speaking with Lori Keller, and she's here, parking rep, she came up, but West Sacramento, City of Sacramento are probably the closest. They also recently acquired the company that services Truckee. It was called Calais, and we were actually talking to them, and in the midst of that, they were acquired by Parkion. So, Truckee, and there was another one, Calais.
I just was wondering if there was.
Lasserville.
Lasserville.
Yeah.
If there were any that were nearby.
And their, their product also has a very wide range of capabilities as far as, and it all comes at various costs, but from color screens to monochrome screens to different, you know, the cash, being able to accept cash is an expensive option, but I think it's important. And, and the, the kiosk also, you might be interested to know, is one hundred percent solar-powered, so it does not have to be wired, and it runs off of sunlight, and ambient light is sufficient even on cloudy days to run it, so.
Ben, do you have any question?
So, my other question would be enforcement. So, we got this sophisticated piece of equipment, how do we enforce the parking?
For, for this lot in particular, if you picture someone visiting the lot and retrieving the data, and you can do it, my understanding is Parkion also partners with a handheld, company makes handheld devices specific for enforcement, so you can enter that lot and actually have a device that will tell you which spaces are supposed to be vacant, or, you know, are not paid for, and if there's a vehicle there, then you can actually do the citation writing on a handheld device. Lori could probably speak more to that. But, but it makes, it makes enforcement much simpler, because either with your cellphone or a handheld device, you enter that lot, and you immediately know which spaces are supposed to be open.
This is not a notice public hearing, but if anybody has any questions, this is your opportunity to ask.
Matthew Coulter, how's the durability of the kiosk? Because it seems like that's, would be a victim of our local aggression to things. I respond to that now.
Well, let's just see, well, we'll, we'll talk, we'll answer all the questions at one time.
And then the software, how secure is that? Being that supposedly all software at this moment is insecure. Skimmers, can skimmers be used on easily? How big is actually the big stainless steel kiosk? Because the ones in Truckee are like twice as big as this thing, and they're stand-out like a sore thumb. But they've been up there for a long time, too, so I think it's probably smaller, I hope. And then, it's already a really congested zone of town and a really scary intersection, and I guess concerned with just more, before, when it was a pay lot, the cars went in in the morning, stayed there usually, and then left at the end of the day. Now it's going to have more in and out, and that's just a, I don't know, a crunch point.
Questions, please?
Time for comments or just questions?
Questions or comments?
Okay. In looking over the two pages that were here, I saw some things that made me kind of puzzled over this. One is just a comment, I rather like living in Grass Valley because we don't have to pay for parking. One of the charms of moving here for me personally was that I don't have to do that. It's always been an annoyance for me, and I can't begin to tell you how many people I've said, I love Grass Valley, and one of the reasons is because we don't have to pay for parking. Another comment is, it says the city staff spoke with a number of stakeholders. I didn't see any mention of consumers who would actually be using the parking spaces asking their opinion. That seems to be a stakeholder group that should have some say in this. And I also don't see anything in here that really, in my mind, justifies going to paid parking. I would expect to see some kind of data about why there's a turnover problem. It seems to be mostly what I hear is anecdotal evidence. Occasionally, that comes up. Personally, I have never, as another anecdotal piece of evidence, I've never had a problem during regular business hours, just coming downtown and finding a place to park. I may have to drive around to find a spot, but it is necessarily right in front of the business I want to go to, but it's an annoyance for me when then I have to pay for parking. And my, it's likely that I may end up going somewhere else, such as the Brunswick Basin. Have a choice of where to go, just because it's easy to pull in, zip in, zip out, so I'm concerned that the downtown merchants may actually end up losing business. I think that'll cover it for now. Thank you.
Dean, any, I'll close the comment period.
Well, I'll let.
That's a great idea, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Just quickly, to address Mr. Coulter's questions, as far as the size, looking at the, the one, and, and they have, again, a couple different models, depending on what capabilities you want it to have, and, and if this were to expand, we may consider different kiosks for different areas that have more or less capabilities. But, the one we're looking at with all the bells and whistles is approximately sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-six inches tall, almost nineteen inches wide and fifteen inches deep, so. As far as durability and security, Parkion, one of the reasons we chose them is because of seeing the results and the reliability that has been demonstrated in areas that I would submit to you are higher crime-ridden, or more crime-ridden than ours, and downtown Sacramento, West Sacramento, and they see, you know, destructive activity and vandalism beyond what we typically see, and they do a good job down there. And same with security, is Parkion's kind of, again, one of the largest market shares in this field, and the software that they offer, and they have their own app that they work with, and all is beyond what some of the smaller companies have, so my confidence in that is, is higher than the other vendors that we looked at.
Who's you talked to? Did you talk to any?
Yes, I talked to, you know, I've had multiple discussions with, by stakeholders, business owners in the immediate vicinity of that parking lot, also with property owners of those properties in the immediate vicinity, and the property owners across the street near the located permit lot where that would be. And so far, everything has been very favorable. The businesses in the immediate area are excited because they see it as increased opportunity for customers to park there. It's a challenge for them when people park in the permit lot and come into their business, and they have to kind of caution them, and they have to go out and move their car, and so they're actually looking forward to this. Of course, that's the immediate vicinity. I have had discussions and met with the downtown association and various business owners, you know, in the downtown area, and most of them understand the benefits, particularly with the turnover, encouraging the turnover, and the benefits that that will bring. The most frequently asked question I get is what are you, what's going to happen with the money, the revenue that's collected? And so my response has been that ultimately, that'll be up to council to decide. One possibility is that money could be set aside for maintaining, beautifying, enhancing existing parking, and maybe even in the future, looking towards expanding parking, but certainly before that, covering the immediate costs, whether it's to, you know, pay back for the purchase of the kiosks themselves and pay for enforcement activities and that kind of stuff. So, that, that's an option. That's one of the concern, the biggest concerns is, hey, what's, what are you going to do with the money? But, again, most of the people I have talked to have been, they understand it, and varying levels of, oh, I think it's great to, well, yeah, I knew this would come someday, but no one, no one, you know, just completely opposed to it. They seem to understand. I have talked to, again, yeah, just anecdotally on the street and people I know and encounter, who are, just general public, you know, who would be customers and using the pay for parking, and the, probably the most frequent response I get is, well, I knew it would come at some point, or we knew it was coming, that kind of a thing, but people do enjoy, you know, Grass Valley because it's unique. There is no, no meters downtown. But people do enjoy, you know, Grass Valley because it's unique. There is no, no meters downtown. And so that is recognized as something that is unique.
Well, I just have a comment. What I like about this pilot program is that, um, it's really not giving up public parking because it's a permit parking lot that we're talking about. To help answer your question, I, I didn't catch your name. But, um, we're taking a lot that, uh, is permit parking, shifting it over and utilizing it for this, uh, pilot program. So we'll be able to get a lot of data without having to encumber the normal parking spaces that, uh, utilizes. So, um, I, I think it's kind of a, a good formula to do this.
I have a segue of Ben's there. I appreciate the pace. A lot of conversations we've had. I think I was dissenting vote the last time we had parking meters up here. I appreciate the fact of what you're speaking of. I was always concerned with my grandmother coming down and using these types of parking meters. So she's been coming down for decades and try to grasp and understand that. So I do appreciate the, the pace. I actually think it's a benefit to be opening up that one little area. Parking there and taking advantage of other permits. And I also think it's important that the city does. Venus, you know, I don't, parking being this major change in budget, but, um, wisely, I think this is because it's one more avenue to say this is one way for us.
Well, you were a big permitted person. Ten years ago, we were.
To address one of the things that he said, I'm not as patient as you. I, if I drive around three times and there is no parking, I leave. I'll go get, I'll find it somewhere else. And so, and, and that's me. I, I don't have the patience to keep looking and searching and, and whatever.
She lives in Morgan Ranch.
It's like, um, but I, again, I think that it's not something that is going to be a slight change, but not drastic. Most people expect that they appreciate that we don't have parking. But I think anywhere else you go, you pay for parking, you pay for parking in Nevada City. I mean, it's a quarter. I mean, it's not very much money, but you still pay for parking. I obviously have always supported the idea of suing. Don't like meter, so yes are awesome.
So, um, I, well, as the Downtown Association Executive Director, I spent ten years studying parking. Number one, if you do, uh, research into SHOUP, S-H-O-U-P, I believe it is. He did, he was a, I think he was a Berkeley professor, but I don't quote me on that. But his response is there's no such thing as free parking. There is always a cost. You have real estate, you have air pollution from people driving around and driving around if you don't create the right kind of parking environment, as Jan was referring to. And we've had a lot of that in Nevada County, especially in downtown Grass Valley. And, um, so he, he references South Pasadena, which was a derelict area that put in paid parking and it changed the whole dynamic because people didn't park on the street all day. They moved their cars. That gave businesses the opportunity to have people come in and you had more customers. There's something called dynamic pricing, which allows you to reach it, an eighty-five percent occupancy rate, but always having a percentage available to the public so that they know they can come down and you can do that by areas. So there is a lot of expertise that goes into, uh, don't think of it as paid parking. Think of it as inventory control because you are controlling the inventory of cars on the street and in the spaces. And this is a very, very, uh, almost scientific response to how you move people through your town. And so it's, it's, it can be a very positive thing. And it's how we roll it out and how we educate people and where the money does go. And in South Pasadena, the money went back into more parking because as businesses improved, you needed to provide more opportunities for people to park. So when I look at it in, in those terms and by people who have done tremendous studies on this over years, um, I find it to be a very advantageous thing for our small fifteen block neighborhood of commercial to take a look at and see if these opportunities exist. A number of years ago, we did do a parking study and we were impacted in our public spaces, especially our Mill Street and Main Street spaces in the T. Over ninety-nine percent parked, if I remember correctly. Let's say over ninety-five. And therefore we had a, a real problem of people going around trying to find those, those spaces. Now, if we can dynamically price our parking so that we can get people to walk a block, walk two blocks, depending on how you charge, then you create a much, uh, more usable area. And you also create a possibly healthier area, a lot greater turn for the fifteen minute buy-ins that come and go in your, in your high traffic areas. So those are some, some things that you might think about. And if you want to do some research, I really recommend that you look up SHOUP and free, no such thing as free parking. So given that, um, you know, it will take us a while, I think, to figure out what the right, right amount. And I, I'm glad that we're looking at a variety of parking fees so that we can develop the right mixture of, for that lot so that we can allow people to use that. And, uh, I think we can also look at how we use our parking twenty-four hours a day when we have events and so forth in Grass Valley. Now, looking forward, you know, everybody wants, has asked me about multiple level parking lot here and a multiple level parking lot there and how are we going to provide more parking? And, you know, money from this, if we generate income, can go into those kinds of things as well as physical improvements. A lot of that money should go to the district where the parking is being paid for. So that is, you're investing in that area. So I think that's really an important thing. So with that, um, I hope that we, uh, have a positive. I think also moving the permit lot to the other side of South Auburn Street is a real good opportunity for us to use that lot and make more public parking available in downtown. It's good for everything that we do in downtown, the events and so forth. I'd be hoping that somebody make a motion to the affirmative and.
I will make the motion to approve staff to proceed with pay for parking pilot program in the municipal parking lot at the corner of Neal and South Auburn Street to include moving the current permit parking at the location of the city-owned lot located at one sixty-one South Auburn and authorization of police department expenditures to facilitate pilot program as outlined and authorize the mayor to execute necessary banking resolutions, enabling credit debit cards to be used as part of the pilot program.
Uh, would this be a voice vote or a real call vote? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me. Posed? Okay. Thank you so much, Steve, for your presentation. Or Captain. It was still small enough. We call people by their email names. So I'd like to go over that with you, Bob. I have that book. Such thing as free parking. It's for a long time.
Have that book.
I went to meetings on that. I can't believe how many meetings. Welcome back. Okay, uh, reports from coun- council members? Do you have a report, Lisa? I mean, it's like three weeks since, or four weeks.
I've been to a lot of government meetings or.
They kind of shut down.
Did meet with, um, the awkward people who were here last week. Just want to remind people that there's not a huge crowd here tonight. Although marijuana has been legalized and, uh, smoking is prohibited in downtown Grass Valley and that. That out there because we've had a lot of issues the last few weeks with people. And it's not because you can't smoke down there.
State, well, you can't smoke it anywhere.
In public. Okay. Can't smoke marijuana in public, period.
Yes, anywhere. Yeah.
You can't smoke weed anywhere in public.
Correct.
Can't smoke anywhere downtown. Haven't been beaten up yet. Okay. Jason?
Um, I, yeah, a couple of things. A real special evening. I got to go down. So the way they get, receive their funding for Meals on Wheels program. Staffing is not available. So like our community does, um, they all got up, they swin out, sought funding, raised enough money for them to not just buy the food, um, but. It's closer to the mic. Um, but we're kind of a special evening for, for, for my family and for all the folks out there just to kind of see. I just like to say, um, great organization, still needing some serious, um, funding. Um, as the federal budget goes through, that's one of the things. Chopping block at times, so make sure that you have the opportunity to support them. Uh, also, um, got sworn in as the chair, if you call it swearing in, seated, um, for the Chair of the E R Economic Resource Council. So, um, should be interesting next year. Guys and all your support. Support that I will be asking.
I, I watched him get sworn in. He did it.
He wanted to make sure, huh?
Do you have any fingers crossed or anything? Ben?
Uh, mine happened last month of what I want to mention. Had to participate in the Police Officers Association, um, Grass Valley P O A, Carrying and Sharing Program. That is one of my favorite things to do at all, really. Take the kids out, uh, in the community that, they open up Kmart really early. Police officers come and, uh, they take a kid and they bring them around Kmart and they can get whatever their budget will allow. It's really a great thing to see. And so, uh, thank you, uh, for the P O A for having such a great program. That's been going on for a while.
We were trying to remember when we were at breakfast, just how long ago it was.
Well, I was a kid when my dad was going and helping out with that. He would tell me about it. And so I got to participate in, this is probably my third year now. And, um, it's the first time he was in town for that. So he got to participate as well. So it just really, uh, it's a great program, so.
And I also participated in the Carrying and Sharing. I appreciate the invitation from the P O A to, for me to participate as a retired law enforcement officer, not from this county. But it is one of the things that truly makes you understand what community is, no matter what community you're in. To see the faces on these kids when you say you have X amount of dollars to spend on anything that you want, it's like, I have that? I said, yeah, you have this much money left. Really? It is just the most amazing thing. They get so excited and, um, it's just very, very heartwarming. And then they get to go to breakfast at IHOP and see Santa and receive the presents from the Carrying and Sharing tree that is in the, the, um, lobby of the police department. It's, it's truly amazing. It's a mess because the kids are tearing stuff. It's like Christmas morning with, with, uh, you know, with about twenty, twenty little kids. But it is absolutely one of the best events ever. And it would definitely, if you have no Christmas spirit, you will definitely have it after that, right? Exactly. Um, and that's about all I did. I went New Year's Eve to the center. And, um, but next week I am going to be in Sacramento most of the week. My Wednesday, I need to wear appropriate shoes for. I've been told that I will be starting at nine o'clock and I'll be spending, um, the entire day in meetings, um, over at the Capitol. One with the governor, the speaker, and a whole bunch of other people. So I will be, um.
Yes, friend.
Speaker, I like the speaker. That's who you're talking about, right?
That's not who I was talking about, yeah. Um, hi. Fifty Shades of Brown, yeah. So yesterday we met, uh, in the morning, uh, C manager, uh, Downtown Association and a number of other agencies with Nevada County Arts and working on our January twenty-fifth rollout for artists and anybody interested in the cultural arts district. And so this is a shout out that Matthew or Robert or anybody who is interested that will be at the Board of Supervisors, uh, on the twenty-fifth. And I think it's in the morning. I can't remember.
No, it's not.
Five o'clock, okay. So, um, five o'clock to seven o'clock, corrected. And, uh, it should, we'll talk a lot about, uh, creation and how we see it going forward and, um, under the N C Arts, uh, flag. So please mark your calendars and it's a really cool thing. I met yesterday with some old, old, old fire, volunteer firemen about our sign and that we're working on. Supportive. I did do New Year's Eve at Center for the Arts. On Sunday before the rain, I did salmon, my fourth annual salmon run. Yeah? Very yellow.
Yellow belly salmon.
Yeah. And then, um, for Wild and Scenic, I am going to be at the Youth and Government Workshop at the Center for the Arts Off-Center Stage from one to three. And it's a bunch of students talking about, um, how they're dealing with climate change. And so I'm really excited to see. I'm there. I told them that you really like. So I also, um, am hosting the Saturday night Sacred Landscape Show at Center for the Arts. Starts at seven thirty. And, um, just looking forward to seeing the films and talking to the filmmakers and doing some other stuff with Wild and Scenic. And then, um, that's all I have, I think.
Can I get one more thing?
Good.
I'd like to thank Tim and Andy for our first squeal-free evening. Did not hear one squeal the entire evening.
And, um, that reminds me that Ramona Howard, who lives downtown Grass Valley and has a. She's the executive director of, uh, N C D V and, uh, they're working on all these upgrades. And so that was really. It's like a big year for N C D V. And with that, we're adjourned. Happy New Year. Oh, I forgot to say I was really sick most of the time. Yeah. I got well just in time for Christmas Day and New Year's.
You see if you were. Kind of learned how to walk all over again.
Oh, keep running.
No, I wanted to see what you think of it. I decided that for my birthday on February eighth, when I have an event at the sorcerer's house.
So what kind of event do you want to have? How many people do you want to have?
Well, I want to invite the community is what I want to do.
Well, you can only invite three hundred, you know, that's the maximum number.
That's why I'm running a by you.
Yeah, so.
I just want to get back to the house.
Yeah, so, um.
I'm looking forward to see that art.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I just. She just gave me a nice check for that today and so I'll come in tomorrow, Christie. I'm going to give you somebody else's number because I don't know if I can be objective about this. Or she would be different than I would be. So I'm going to give you Cheryl's number. Do you know Cheryl Belcher? She's C H R Y. Okay, her number is two oh five. You can have it. Two oh five, eight, seven, nine, three. And she's a treasurer and she, yeah, and she knows how much it costs to do the house and I, I haven't gotten it.